Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll all rise for the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the great soul of liberty and justice for all.
I did not say take roll call.
No roll calls next.
So, thanks everybody for being here tonight and thank all of the board members and staff for being here as well. I think we're gonna, you know, it's a work session, so it's, we're gonna keep it pretty informal. And what I'd like to do is maybe start off with each of the subcommittees giving a quick overview of, you know, the conversations that took place and anything that came of those meetings. And I would like to kind of move through each of them before we go into further detail on all of them, just to make sure that we're getting through each of them in a timely manner tonight. So, in my notes from the last meeting, I had sports facilities first and I show that as Greg, Amanda, and Aaron. So, I don't know who you want to pick for your spokesperson or if you all want to chime in or...
Greg, you wanna take the lead?
We did talk about a sports facility and a location. Obviously, I don't think it's any secret, we've been speaking with the school corporation, lots of land north of Sycamore. But I think that the emphasis here is, this is not a grand park, this is not a sports field that they're gonna have up in Kokomo and what they're gonna do in Lebanon. This is a facility that we're gonna want for our kids in our community that don't want to play travel, that can't afford travel, that aren't good enough to play travel. They just want to play football, or they just want to play softball, or baseball, or lacrosse, or whatever it is. And so, at the same time, we also had talked briefly about once if we could do this is to create a, I'll call it an event center as well, where if somebody wants to have a small wedding reception or bridal party, or whatever it might be. And I think one of the reasons why that is such a good location, you know, we've got our Rib Fest that we have every year that we've moved out to Hendricks County because it continues to grow. You've got the Heritage Festival every year, it continues to grow. We have Avon Farmers Market that at some point in time, maybe the hospital may want to sell that piece of property. It's on 36, so we need a place for that. So, it's a good location, it's got overflow parking, you got Middle School North, you've got Sycamore, you've got King's Way. So, we're excited about it and, you know, I think the big key is trying to figure out how we can help the school and then we can then maybe take over that piece of property.
I guess I could just add from the township side that I think we are in agreement that there needs to be some sort of recreational facility for these children. I think it's been a need for quite a while. And so, we're excited that the town has kind of taken the lead on working with the school corporation. And from the township perspective, we want to come into that, those discussions and see what we can do to help. So, whether that is eventually helping to develop these fields, we're not quite sure. We're not, our group is not quite there yet. We have a lot of numbers to crunch, but first we have to work on land. And then I think that's when the township will step in and we'll start to crunch numbers and work together with the town to figure out what our next steps are.
Greg, do you want to repeat that? Dr. Wyndham just walked in.
He's got two representatives here that'll give him the Cliff's Notes version, right?
Go ahead, Aaron, sorry.
No, I think that pretty much covers it. We know there's a need, we've identified that. We have a handful of options right now and it sounds like we're on the same page moving forward. So, we'll just figure out what the next steps are as far as our side and go from there.
Wonderful, that's great news. Next on the list going down was the Leadership Collaborative Community, which was Shane, Robert, and myself. So, who wants to speak on that first?
I can, then certainly you guys jump in as well. So, we met, I guess, a week or so ago, talked a lot about what we're currently doing and obviously having this collaborative meeting and felt that that was a big step in itself to have this with regularity. We wanted to continue with that. The other discussion, and I think Don can talk about it as well, is we talked about maintenance services and whatnot. And basically started the conversation of what are, what are services that one or both entities do that either the other could use part of those services, or can we consolidate those services into one area? So, we don't duplicate that, I guess is the way to say that. So, we talked about that from obviously the maintenance standpoint of the vehicle and maintenance. The other part was, we started a conversation about parks and what does that look like? And that, we both have parks, we both look at those kind of things. And how is that developed and how is that shared? Obviously, there's a lot to that onion, if you will, to kind of peel back and discuss. So, it was just an early kind of brainstorming, what are the, what are the things we can look at that are shared to somewhat reduce redundancy, so.
Just real quick, just sum it up in a few words, what we're trying to do here is just find efficiencies in government, right? And that's exactly what Shane was talking about, the two major items that we discussed, the maintenance is precisely that. If the township's spending X amount of dollars per year on maintenance, they've got the tools and et cetera, but they've got extra time that they can lend, perhaps that's a place where we can save some taxpayers' money to take advantage of it. Same thing with parks, and we hope to have a big collaboration later this year. So, efficiency in government, that's, that's the key phrase there.
A couple of things too, that, just to delve a little bit deeper in it. We talked about, currently we all collaborate and we buy our fuel through the schools and we're all thankful for that. But where are other areas that we can perhaps look at saving money? And what came to mind, sitting there at that table over lunch, was, man, we all have a bunch of tires that we're responsible for purchasing every year, you know, between the schools and the town and our police department and your fire trucks and things like that. So, you know, maybe talking about looking at the maintenance line items and just seeing, for instances like that, how much money we're really spending on rubber every year and taking that number and going out to either directly to manufacturers or maybe even to some of our local businesses and seeing what type of discount they'd be willing to give us all. You know, as we take a police car in, of course, that would get billed to the town, but if we can negotiate some cost savings based on the number in its entirety, then I think it's at least a question to ask and see if we can get some savings there. Another thing that we talked about was a big, well, for one thing, we talked about parks. I'll just build off of what's already been said. And I think it was news to Shane, and so I just want to put it out there because it might be new information to some others, that the town receives a park or a recreation impact fee from every building permit that we get. So, as subdivisions are developed, we get a recreation impact fee. And with that money, we are required, you know how our funds work, certain ones can only be spent on certain things. We are required to buy parkland. We cannot develop parks with that money. So, that is why we see out there on social media sometimes people saying, you know, hey, the town's got four parks or five parks and they don't have them developed. Well, it comes from two different pots, if you will. And so, it kind of goes back in and ties in with the sports group that if we can even use some of our existing parkland that is undeveloped and we could use it and collaborate with you guys, perhaps you guys could develop it and then we could lease maybe that to AJAA or something like that. It would solve a couple of issues. It would take a piece of dirt that's undeveloped that we had to purchase and it would develop it and it would provide something to the community. So, think about that if you guys would when you all meet again. Might be a topic to discuss further or deeper. That's about it on ours. Next was secure the borders, and with that, we're talking about not the country borders, but our township borders. And on that committee is Robert, Steve, and myself. And that's just out of this group, but we kind of have another subcommittee and that's an annexation committee within the town. And on that, we also have, on that committee, the people that I just named, as well as Ann Inglehart from the schools and Jeff Bradley from the library board. So, we are all working on annexation strategy and things like that, out on the western and, and the north border and the south border, just to secure that and stop the encroachment and the, you know, the other municipalities that are coming across the line. I think we had a successful open house with our first meeting that we had. It was pretty well attended, it was nine homeowners out of, how many, 21?
Something like that, yeah.
Showed up. And our feedback was positive. So, we have now scheduled, I think, to meet next Wednesday or Thursday in the afternoon to talk about what areas we're gonna look at next and try and to secure that border and protect the school's interest, the library's interest, the township's interest, and of course, the towns as well. So, it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to all be able to collaborate on a unified positive thing that affects us all. So, I don't know if anyone else wants to speak on that topic or...
I just want to give a shout out, make sure it's included. Don is on, I guess he's technically not a part of that annexation, but he's been doing a lot of the work. Steve was the appointment to that, again, of course, thank you Steve, but...
And Ryan.
And of course, Ryan, yes.
Hi, Ryan.
Truth be told, I don't think we do anything without you, Ryan, so.
Another thing I'd like to add to that, one folks understand is that we're not talking about, you guys annexing big, large areas. We're talking about properties that are continuous, building the wall. That way it helps preserve our tax base, okay? The fire department also helps preserve the taxes with the school and library. Because if other, any other towns come in, they can set up TIF districts and pass-throughs and everything else. That's why we're gonna collaborate again.
The percentage of students from other...
Oh, yeah, what, Ann, back me up, make sure we're correct here. If I remember, it's 10%, roughly 10% of our Avon schools come from Plainfield municipality that live in Washington Township. Yeah, so those online or listen to this, so the accurate number is roughly 10% of the students in our schools, they live here in Washington Township but are currently, they currently live inside Plainfield. They live in our community but technically live in Plainfield. So, that's a large, large number. What's that, what's the raw number, forgive me? That's a lot of kids.
It's a lot of kids and a lot of tax dollars that aren't, that isn't coming to Avon and therefore not going towards building our schools, our teachers pay, our buses, you know, our fuels, all of our expenses. So, definitely an important topic. Next was the Subcommittee of Public Transportation, and that was Steve Eisenbarth, John Taylor, Steve Moore from our Public Works Department, and Brett, is Brett here?
Yep, Brett's here. She's so quiet, I should let her speak. I agreed to her that I'll go ahead and report a little bit. We met really by email and, you know, just touch and base by phone. And what we talked, first, this committee, the idea behind it is to look for ways to get measured, reduce congestion, not just on the roadways, but yes, on the roadways, and then to make better connections, be it on pathways, walkways. You know, you guys talk about walls, well, we talk about bridges. We're looking to bring things together. So, one of the big things was what can we do, and it's been a hurdle for several years back, is to bring bus transportation where we can have connections between Marion County to Hendricks County. And by that, we don't just mean little old Avon, we mean actually going out to Danville too. And, you know, just having an Indigo come out this way. Right now, Indigo stops pretty much at the Kroger over there and was it Raceway, not Raceway, but Country Club. And so, we would like to see that come out this way. In the past, what the history has been is the reason why that stopped was gas prices, they said, Indigo said that was a problem. But we're looking at other communities, Muncie, right Brett, I think that's what it was. Muncie is one community that has had some success in this area of bus transportation, getting connections. And the advantages are huge. You could, you could bring folks in that cannot afford transportation. I think part of this idea came because of our local LINK program, helping people, seniors, and helping people get to medical appointments. So, we would like to see something like this more organized on a level here within the county. So, that's been sort of the focus on that, bus routes established. I have, I had to admit it, but I haven't had opportunity to really get together with John Moore and, oh, John Taylor and Steve Moore to try to pick their brains a little more on that, but that's... Brett, is there anything else you think you want to cover there on that? We can take this...
We have been working, we had some good discussions with Marina Keers from Henderson County, which also takes a lot of people around coming to work. So, we had the discussions as well as by intra-county transportation. Because the most recent census, Link's funding is gonna change because Henderson County has a designated urban transportation area. So, there is more opportunity, I think, to work with Indigo than there was in the past. So, it's an interesting and exciting time to work and talk about it.
I know Plainfield just, this was, it's been a year and a half, two years ago, they were, it was about two years ago, okay, they were studying to either raise, I think, an income tax, I believe. What, what came of that? Did you guys look into that? Is there maybe something that we can duplicate?
I think it was most of our part with COVID, but Marina was involved in that. I mean, and everything that she has, we can look at what worked and what didn't work and how it might work for us.
Fair enough, so we're not reinventing the wheel, pun intended there. Like that's, we've got some kind of, some kind of framework for success. Thank you, thanks.
The next thing that we talked about was a town center, and we really didn't assign a subcommittee to that. So, we'll just, we'll move on from there. So, is there any, we can move on to questions that each of the subcommittees might have or one of the other, you know, subcommittees to dive deeper into whatever was explained? Is there any questions or anything? No? Okay, then we could talk about, are there any new areas that anyone has given thought to that we might be able to work together? I mean, just coming out of this meeting, like we kind of just said about the maintenance facility and maybe another idea for not just the mechanics and things like that, but maybe tires and things, so on. Is there any thought that came out of your meetings that...
Well, I can tell you that from our conversations, Ryan is looking at some other parcels of land out there. Obviously, there needs to be a land swap, and so we're looking at that. I think that's what our group is really at, I mean, you really can't find anything till you can find another piece of land.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, Greg, is that I don't think we're there yet. I think the land piece has to get into place and then we start talking about, okay, how do we come together and make this happen?
So, have you guys spoken with the schools to ask them like where they want that parcel? We know northwest, but is there a optimal...
Conversation has been northwest. I think we've, I've met with Scott, Ann's been there, Kim Woodward, Ryan, so I, I think we've had our conversation. We have a general idea. Now, the hard part is to find somebody who is interested in selling. I mean, this isn't anything, and I'm not here to speak for the school, that they're planning to build a new school on once we identify a piece of land, but it's more of a security blanket that they have it for in the future. Obviously, if the East and Gray project continues to move forward, that's where a lot of those students are gonna be and that's right next to River Birch, and that will just, they'll become full. I mean, so they're gonna need another location. But it's, I think like Amanda said, it's a step at a time. I mean, we need to find out where it is and then we'll go to the next step and how we can work together. Another step is, is it gonna be, you know, we get Farina Dunroe, who's gonna manage it? Is it AJAA, is it another organization? I mean, these are a number of questions that are there that really can't be answered at this time.
So, to circle back also to the first meeting, or the last meeting, I'm sorry, we talked about the adult education and we talked about maybe creating a resource guide and then also the libraries, the schools, the Hendricks College Network, the town, everyone putting the resource guide on their websites and things like that, just to get the word out. And I'm going to say at this point, the town has not done that. We're getting a new software for our town, we're completely switching our website provider and things. So, we have not done that yet, but I just wanted to throw it back out there, at least as a reminder, and see if anyone else has been able to cross that off their list yet.
I think for us, that would be a Karen question, but I don't, yeah, I think that's been done yet. So, that's a great reminder, so again, the reasons we have these meetings, right?
Right.
So, Don, you, if, I'll get that list from you.
Okay.
And then I can give that to you, Don.
Jared?
I will say that there hasn't been zero progress on that. I was able to meet with the library and they were able to get me the file codes that I needed. So, that way we're gonna be able to decide to just launch. Their entire calendar is going to be seamlessly integrated with the town's. So, whenever somebody goes to visit the town of Avon's website and they're looking at the calendar of events, they're gonna actually be able to filter it and we'll just library events. And I'm hoping, this is a, again, a hope, to work with the library on possibly creating different types of calendars. So, specifically for adult education, they can filter and see what opportunities there are for adult education. And then from there, expanding to maybe working with school and getting school events put in there as well. So, I wouldn't say nothing, just nothing set in stone right now since we're still waiting for the new website to go up and get running.
And we're anticipating that's gonna be sometime in March or April still?
Yes, March.
March?
It will be March.
Okay.
I will make sure it's in March. I see a spot, what are you talking about? Dexter?
All right, so next, I think we should maybe address some of the things that, you know, the public sees and that we're hearing as far as feedback on social media or just out there meeting with our neighbors and other people in the community. And I guess one of the big topics right now that we saw in the last week even was consolidation. And whenever we talk about it internally, we talk about unification. And we're looking, anytime we talk about it is, how can we unify everyone and our resources and things like that? So, you know, we just, I don't want to ignore the elephant in the room or what's out there on social media and I think that anyone tuning in might be wondering if we're going to address it. So, I just want to throw it out there and let everybody kind of speak to it or speak of it and clarify any misnomers or misunderstandings that might be out there and things like that, so.
I can jump in. Don was kind enough to talk with me about it too before the meeting. And I tell you what we, Don brought up that their financial advisor has looked at the impacts, you know, for unification based on the tax caps, the negative cash flow to the county, the school, and the library. And without running through numbers, I'll just say, you know, what we need to do is we need to figure out how to make these things, like Robert said, make them whole. What can be done to work with that? And what can we do to start the process? Because if we look at that, I wasn't here during that first consolidation thing back when the fire, you know, department had the issues there before the legislation was changed. Well, anyway, back then, there was a deficit number two, whatever it was, and it took five years, I think, is what the calculation of the financial study was to make it whole. I'd be like, I'd like to see maybe if we could work together on that, like what could we do to theoretically look at that? So, it's good, it's a difficult thing to talk about. I think we throw numbers out there, everyone gets all defensive about it. But if we could say, we, as the town and the township, and then, you know, with the library and then also with the fire department and the schools, all of us, if we could look to see what would be the impact to each of our entities and what is gonna be done if we bring these entities together to make that right. Now, that's a big overview of it. Getting down to the brass tacks on it is gonna be harder to do, but I think that's a good start, you know, so that we keep it on a, you know, a good positive level and don't have to call the elephant in the room. We just say, okay, the numbers don't add up right away, but we can get them there and we, you know, what can we do to get that started? So, I'll start with that.
If I can piggyback on that a little bit, I think Steve's talking about essentially just one issue. And to be fair, say it's dozens is inaccurate as well. There's a lot of problems, there's a lot of roadblocks to making this a successful, single-government community. That doesn't mean it's worth, not worth attempting or worth looking into, but I think the important part is it's the eight, nine of us in this room that, right now, that have the ability to identify what those problems are, set, start setting priorities and working towards them. And I'm glad that we're here at the table, we're doing this, you know, making these lists. And we've identified some low-hanging fruit to start addressing. Next steps are, let's identify these big priorities that are gonna take financial hits or things that we're gonna have to plan for decades down the road to resolve. So, I'm looking forward to it.
And I just kind of want to state for anyone who's listening, whether it be virtually or out here, you know, we're not talking a couple thousand dollars, it's a couple million dollars. And we are just absolutely not okay with the school corporation, the library, and other entities taking that hit. So, that's, like you said, the first hurdle, and then there are so many others that need to be addressed as well. But I think what is fantastic about what we have going on here is that we've at least, at least we're working together, right? We are two separate governments, but we are trying to find ways to work together because that's... that's what's best for the people that live here in Avon and Washington Township, and I just think it's a first step in whatever direction we're going. I don't think we know what that direction is right now, but it's going to ebb and flow, you know, and we're going to go down this path, and it's going to take curves, and I just am really excited that this group is willing to open their hearts and their minds to come together, to be transparent, you know, to let everyone, let the community know what's going on. And we hear you, right? We hear what you're saying on social media, and if anyone is, has a question or doesn't understand, you know, and they think, well, why haven't you guys consolidated? There's a lot to that, and if you want to pick up the phone and call any of us, we'd be happy to talk about it. There are figures that we have that can be shared, and if, Don, if you want to share those, I think that that's important.
Share those.
Yeah.
Steve talked about the financial study that was done.
Hey, Don. Can you say that?
Sure. Thank you. So Steve talked about our financial advisor did a study, and this was done just a few months ago. Actually, I've shared it later on with Greg and also with Ryan at our collaboration meeting that we have every other month, and Ryan did take it back to your financial advisor, and he confirmed that he's in agreement with those figures, and since that time, the auditor's office has done the same thing. The tax cap, what we're talking about is, is that 1%, 2%, 3% that's in the state constitution, and I, as a taxpayer, personal property taxpayer, the most I can be paying is 1% of my assessed valuation, regardless of what the taxing entities that I pay to charge. And the difference when that, you know, it doesn't get covered, is absorbed by the taxing, you know, those taxing entities altogether. I, until the referendum happened, didn't have any price increase, you know, any higher amount that I was paying in property taxes for five, six years because of cap, tax caps. Ninety-seven percent of our township residents are at that 1%. That may have changed recently with the most recent assessment. But our financial advisor looked at that and said, if the town of Avon and the unincorporated area of Washington Township consolidated, and the new town provided these services of roads and schools, I mean, police, that type of stuff, this is what the impact would be, and the county would lose $1,084,000. Avon Schools would lose $1,498,000, and the library would lose $68,000. Now, my friend Laura will tell you, $68,000 is quite a bit of money to them. And so that's the thing, why over the years, the township board, and the township board is the one that decides on the township side about having discussions and putting it out for a vote. It's not the trustee, it's the township board, and it calls for the legislative bodies on both sides. But that, you know, is the reason that these folks, okay, and me included, you know, are hesitant to do that until that's solved. We're talking about money the school would lose, and that's not referendum dollars, okay? That's outside, the tax caps. So Scott would tell you, that would take a real bite out of their budget, and so that's the issue, okay? And that's the thing, we as a group, if we're wanting to look at that, we need to look at ways to solve it. We need to work with the state legislature to see if there's, you know, some kind of legislative solution to that. I mean, there's a lot of different angles. The county, you know, some folks have said, well, what about maybe the county passing that money through? That would take the county council to do that, it would not be an automatic pass-through. And I verified that with the auditor's office last week. So, I mean, that, those are the things that we're talking about, and so it's, it's not that folks are opposed to looking at consolidation, it's what the impact would be if it happened. So it is, as Robert said, it's a lot of different moving parts that would need to be looked at and try to find solutions to.
Well, and even beyond the financial, there comes the day-to-day impracticality even, which a lot of people may not understand. We, if it were ever to happen, we can't click our fingers and have 30 to 35 extra police officers that are currently covered, you know, the unincorporated areas are covered by the closest police officer, but really those services fall under the county in the unincorporated areas. And so, you know, there, we just can't, one day we're not consolidated or unified, and one day we are. It takes a lot of planning, it takes a lot of resources, financial resources, not only to make people whole, but also to be able and be in a position to cover the services that are required. You know, fire is already covering, but our police isn't, and so that's a lot of police officers. It's almost double the current population. It is more than double.
It's almost triple.
Yeah, it's almost triple.
The other thing people need to understand is, if consolidation happened, the services provided by the township would still have to be taken care of.
Yes.
The township assistance, the fire department, the parks. When we looked at consolidation back in, I think it was 2010, 2012 or something, one of the things that we looked at is that your, your, your food and beverage tax would not take care of our parks, so that park levy that we have would still have to be in place, so that would still happen, and now we've got more parks. Township assistance, you know, we got abandoned, you know, cemeteries we take care of. So we control, I'd gladly give to you guys, but, but it, but I mean, those, those services would all come over to the new town, okay? So they would still have to happen.
Yeah, there, I mean, there are a lot of reasons why it could be good, but there are a lot of reasons why it doesn't work right now, and it would take a lot of collaboration, a lot of communication, a lot of financial impact studies, a lot of planning and things like that. Not just that, but clearing the roads. You know, right now, in the incorporated area, we, as a town, clear the neighborhoods and the streets and things like that, and we're responsible for the maintenance of those things. If we took on an additional two-thirds of paved roadways and, and area to snowplow and things like that, financially, we're not prepared to do that either. We can't just do that overnight because now we're all consolidated and unified, so there's a lot to go into it. I'm just personally glad that we can address it because people question it all the time out there, and I think that us sitting here and explaining it and at least being open to address maybe, and to talk and have the hard conversations about, does it make sense? Doesn't it make sense? What do we have to do to make it make sense? And I'm just thankful for this group of leaders right now that we have that are willing to do that because I don't think we've had it in the past.
And to add to that, because of the complexity of it, because of all those items, if you will, and call them issues, that's why we're trying to look at these individual pieces that we've identified.
Yes.
These subcommittees of, let's move something forward, let's do something right for the community, to either save or add efficiencies or do something like that.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why we've done what we've done, so.
Right, absolutely.
I personally think of one, I call it building the wall, but if we keep, keep doing that, I mean, to keep the other towns from coming in, I mean, when we, and we get that in place, it's going to take a little bit of time, but if we can, you know, get folks to agree to do that, it, I think it will help a lot too in the meantime.
It will. It would at least address.
As we're looking at this whole picture, yeah.
Can I, can I piggyback on one of your points, Don? Just, it's a bit of a rebuttal, but it's just to clarify. So the county, the town, or the county, the library, the schools definitely would be losing money, we understand that. All that money doesn't just disappear or goes to the state, it actually comes to this new community, this new government. So it, the, the, the rub is, we have to find a way to ensure that that new government is able to properly make those entities whole. That's a challenge. That's one of the, it's one of the major roadblocks to making sure that, how do we make sure that the schools are whole 10 years from now, or the libraries are whole 10 years from now? That's, that's the challenge, that's the difficulty. So I just wanted to clarify that that money just doesn't disappear, and you guys get some, some tax return. I wish it were like that, that's not the case, that all that money just shifts over to a new controlling entity, which would be this new government. We, we have to come up with the right way to make sure the schools and the library and the services that the township are currently providing are still made whole, but there you go.
And you've got nine elected officials sitting here, or eight elected officials sitting here saying that we are at least all in agreement that we can't, we can't move forward until we resolve those issues.
Correct.
And I think that speaks volumes for, for us sitting here, because our priority is bettering our community and making sure that, you know, we are continuing to support the things that make Avon great. And so I appreciate that we're, again, that we're all just sitting here having that conversation and that we're all at least in agreement on, on the big, on the big items.
Just to follow up on that, I think it's important, and I think, as you just said, we all realize, we cannot take something to the public, to our taxpayers, and ask them to make a decision when we haven't provided them any information to make that decision. I can tell you that when we started this conversation, what, about four years ago? Because it was before these three individuals were on the township board, that deficit was 3.2 million. You just said now it's less than 1.5 million. I don't know how it got there, I don't know why it went from here to here, but we've, we're doing different things together, and, but I think now we're to the point is, we need to, say we're in agreement to hire a consultant to kind of start to build it. We know what problems are, let's try to find solutions, and if we can do that, and if we notice that this deficit over eight, over four years has dropped 1.7 million.
Just because the assessed valuation gone up, what the auditor told us.
That's fine, but we need to understand, will that continue? So I kind of look at it as, did we really do anything? What did we do to impact that? I don't know the answer, if anything. So I think that's what we need to do, and I think also, as we continue to do this, you know, as we say, we hashtag one strong community. We've got great schools, we have great police, you know, we've got great people, we've got great parks. We don't want to lose sight of that, we want to continue to build on that. So I guess my ask is, is if Don and your board is willing to appropriate some funds to determine how much it's going to cost to find somebody that can start to gather this information. We've got nine people that are doing their piece of it, but we don't have anybody gathering the data and putting it into a document that everybody can understand. And so I think that, that's my, that's where I'm at, and then because I'm, based on that, then we can build a timeline. How long is it going to take us to get the data that we're all in agreement with, and get input from the schools, from the library, from everybody? And then, do we have the data to go out to the public and say, we'll have meetings, and then do we want a referendum?
Hey Greg, if I could piggyback on a, on a positive note here, you pointed out some very good points, that we've decreased that deficit quite a bit by half, you know, since 2012. Deficit being just that, who would be not made whole, you know, it's gotten better. Well, like Don was mentioning, the 1% for residential, that doesn't go anywhere, it hurts us, but now that we've had more commercial, that's why we're starting to see a little better tilt to the scale to our side. And I know everyone here is kind of like saying, yes, if we can keep doing the commercial, it really does help our tax situation. So I know from the town's perspective, that's what we're going to keep pushing, be it Easton Gray or whatever else we have coming up the, down there, and even though people don't like the big boxes there on 100 South, by gosh, those guys pay taxes that we just love, you know, that's nice, and so.
And I don't think we've, well, I know we haven't seen the impact from that yet.
True.
Because they're not open, they're still being built. They don't have people working there, they don't have the personal property taxes that we're generating, so, but at the same time, as I told Don, I don't want to spend money I don't have yet either. So we know there's good things on the horizon, we know that the imbalance of the tax base is starting to shift, but we don't have any data yet to rely on.
No, no, I agree. I just, I'll close and say, I really think it's just important, amen to you there, let's get, let's figure out what these numbers are, and let's keep track of them so we can, when we say make them whole, let's make sure our county, the schools, libraries, others are not hurt through this effort when it does go forward. So I agree, I think that's the first next step, is to do that detailed, deeper dive.
I want to add a small correction. I think Greg unintentionally forgot the fire department, we've got a, an amazing fire department as well, that's, just throwing that out there. The other side of this, I, I agree in spirit, I think I want to back up a little bit, I want to, I want to make sure that that's the number one priority. For me individually, making sure, to me, the schools are like shining gem of this community. So for me, that's the number one priority, making sure that they're whole, but I don't know if, if I'm alone in that. I don't know if that's the number one roadblock, if that's the number one priority, that if we were to invest in doing a financial study to find out what we can do to make that happen, should that be where it goes? Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're all in agreement in that, but I want to make sure that's, making sure that the schools are whole is, is that number one priority.
I think everybody needs to be whole, not just the school.
I think Anne says yes.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I have a question. I'm not sure if this would be the place to ask it. I love the idea of a consultant, but I have to wonder if we need a little bit more education on why the township funds go to the town? To me, that's where, that's one of the hiccups, right? That, that's what draws, why does that levy, and it's a levy issue, I understand that, but I think I need to understand why that happens. I need to see the mechanics, I need to see it on paper, the mechanics of that, because I think that might give us some clues of some more low-hanging fruit that we can tackle maybe before a consultant. So that's just, it's kind of a question, it's kind of a request. Do we see those mechanics so we understand?
Are you wanting, and don't take this the wrong way, are you wanting some kind of presentation on township funding 101? I mean, I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean.
And maybe that is. I just want to understand, I need to see those. I need to see, okay, here, here it is before consolidation, here is after. Do I understand that you now pick up their levy? I get that, but why does that impact us? And why does that impact the library? I, I need to see that mechanic, but because what, the problem could be, it could be a legislative, and maybe that's where we get involved with legislators and say, we don't want to do this, we're, we're all on board, but here's how it impacts this, and if you were able to pass this legislation, this would help all of us to achieve our goal. So I just think, I personally need to see those mechanics so I understand.
I can take a shot at an analogy. You invited four people, there are, what, 40% of Washington Township isn't incorporated, the land, the, obviously rough on that number, but you've invited, those 40 people, 40% of people are only invited to a house party holding a pie meant for four people, but all of a sudden, after we can, if, if after we consolidate, now those 40% of people also now have an additional guest that arrived, in this case, the town. That, you only still have that same amount of pie. You, if you have additional guests show up, you just have to divvy that pie up even smaller. So it's, it's truth be told, the tax reduction on the school and the library come from those in unincorporated Hendrick, in incorporated Washington Township that would then be assessed this new municipality's levy. So it's, it's not, where we are now, you guys already have a pot, their portion of the pie being taken out, our portion of the pie isn't being taken out of those roughly 40%, and that number's BS, I'm pulling that out of my hat, that's not accurate, there's just whatever that percentage of numbers that are not currently in the town, they all of a sudden get a slice of that pie where they didn't before.
So then, and if you can't really control that levy, obviously the town can or cannot?
It's not a levy, I don't believe, it's just taxes, it's not, we're not asking for a tax levy, we don't have a tax.
We don't have a tax, yeah.
It's a tax, existing tax structure.
But that's the mechanics that I need to understand, because I totally get that, I'm totally on board with that, I totally understand that, but why, and I realize you are taking their portion of the pie, I totally get that, but there's a mechanic in that that is taking the hard portion of that, and I just want to understand, because we can look at and say, oh, wait a minute, here's how we can help out.
Is this not the...
Where I can help you set up for this?
Sure.
Are we talking about the three-year, three years of lost revenue that stays with the county then? Was that part of this discussion?
I don't think that's where, I don't think that's where that's coming from. I genuinely think it is purely the additional levy on the 40%.
So the, but he, he said, he said on a point... So the, but he, he said, he said on a point.
Levy, forgive me, additional tax.
He said a point there, Ann, from the standpoint is, the, the 40% of the unincorporated, I'm in the unincorporated area, so I'll use me as example. I don't pay Avon, Town of Avon taxes, okay? If the, if, if the two sides merge, now I'm going to be assessed. But I'm at the 1%, all right? So if I'm at the 1%, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to pay that difference, okay? I'll pay some, but not much. And so that's where tax gaps come into play, and so the school, and the library, and the county, okay, and the new town absorb the difference, broken down based on, and unfortunately, the, the school corporation is the biggest portion of that pie of property tax dollars. And so that's why you get hit, you know, with that, with that impact, okay?
And like.
I totally get that, I totally understand the pie, I totally understand that. But if we're going to fix this problem, we got to fix that problem.
Well, that's part of this whole discussion, that's part of the consultant.
That's where I would like to understand if it's a legislative thing, and if that won't, that's all I'm saying.
You and the other 50,000 people.
Yeah, I agree.
Can I ask for clarification, that you're referring to this deficit that has occurred? That it's not as bad as it was four years ago? But you're saying that is because the AB has grown?
That's what the, that's what the county auditor has told me, yes, the AB has grown.
So, I guess my take on that would be, the AB has grown, but along with it have come the people that I'm providing services to.
Correct.
So I don't, I guess I don't, I don't see it as a deficit necessarily, if you get where I'm saying.
I think it's a, you know, it's, it's only a deficit when you're comparing numbers.
Okay.
Sure, that's where you have a deficit.
Okay. I just wanted.
But I agree with you.
Extra money.
I have a question.
Senator.
Excuse me, this is the first meeting I've intended on this topic, but my question is, what problem is it you're trying to solve? I don't quite get.
I can.
So I've heard lots of details about this and that, the, the different, you know, schools and fire, so what problem would consolidation and unification solve that you're all talking about?
I'll, I'll take a stab at that. So one, we talked about it a little bit earlier, just efficiencies of government, finding two competing governments over the same air, territory. When, when two governments compete, the citizens, the residents lose. And ultimately, I think it's our job is to find ways to improve that.
I understand that, that you're, each group is serving their own different group of citizens, okay?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
And, and therein lies, therein lies the confusion, the muddy the water even more.
So there may be some efficiencies in these consolidations.
Absolutely.
This park pays for this park, this group pays for that park, this township pays for each park, and this town pays for the, so I don't really see the efficiency.
Well, it's not even just efficiency, it's giving everyone that lives in Washington Township a voice. So in other words, the five council members that are sitting on this portion of the room, we make decisions that impact the residents that live in the township, even though they don't have an opportunity to vote for their elected officials, or to participate in boards and commissions to help, you know, set standards and things like that. So, it's not just monetary, it's not just a monetary thing, it's not just an efficiency thing, it, it's a lot. It's giving the residents that live here a voice, because no matter what we do, you all drive through Avon, you're driving through part of the incorporated area, and you're driving on our roads, you're driving on things, and things that develop, your passing development that we've made choices and decisions on, and you had no opportunity for input, being a, playing a role in the decisions, or, or even having an opportunity to elect your officials. So.
The township board is elected as well, so, but their decisions affect my property value. So the township decisions, not as much, their decisions absolutely affect it. But I, you know, as I listen to these conversations, I still don't understand what is the problem that this group is attempting to solve.
Do, do you live in Avon, or just unincorporated Washington Township?
No.
So you live in the Town of Avon. So you, right now, pay for services through your taxes that other residents don't have to. When you call 911, it is most likely an Avon Police Department officer that's going to show up at your door, if you're getting robbed. So right now, you're getting a service provided to you by taxes that you don't pay. Stormwater is another one. You're paying for stormwater utility to, 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 to lower, to, to improve the infrastructure of stormwater so that you don't have flooding in your yard. If you live in the Town of Avon, you get assessed this. If you live in unincorporated, it goes to the county. I'm not going to disparage the county on here, but I'm going to tell you that you want the Town of Avon to be providing that. The, the other aspect is, fire department is another one. If you live in that Avon area, those, what, what we were just talking about earlier, 10% of the school's children live in Plainfield, but live in Washington Township, because they're in Plainfield, this fire department doesn't get any of their money, because Plainfield has a fire territory. But because Washington Township Fire is closer, most likely Washington Township Fire will be showing up to those jobs. So when it, when you, when you dismiss that it's, I'm not finding a problem with efficiency of government, that's, that's, that's really short-sighted to what's actually going on here. You, you are, because there are two competing governments, trying to do essentially some of the same things, it's not best for you, it's not best for the residents of this community, and, and I, I, I find a personal problem with my duties to, 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 to do that. There you go, I'm off that soapbox, I'm sorry.
But I still don't understand the problem, is there a problem state? What is the, what is the problem that we're proposing to solve? Is it inefficiency, is it inequity? It's, it, I would say it's a number of things, there's, there's a large group of members in CRT that, we have five, Coalition for Responsible Growth at Avon, that we have five entities issuing building permits and zoning issues inside of Washington Township. Why is Washington Township necessarily the, the board?
That's the way that it's set up in the, at the state level?
From the state statute.
Yeah.
Well, the state statute also provides us, under the modernization act, the option to be able to do something about it, and that's what they're discussing.
Your question you just brought up, is, is that the right boundary? I, I believe you were asking, is that the right boundary that we should be setting? To be honest, I, I don't know. And I, I don't think that's what any of us are trying to say, that it has to be this. However, three of those taxing entities share that exact same geographical border. The schools, the library, and the township all share that geographical border, geopolitical border, as written by the state statute. So, however, they all have completely different rules on what govern them.
Okay, we need to kind of move on, I don't, I mean.
I was just, can I say, move real quick? I, I think we've derailed a little bit, I don't think that the purpose of these meetings was to discuss unification.
Right.
Um, we were discussing these groups and, and the things that we can do to work together right now. I think what we wanted to address was, like you said, on social media, there's a lot of people, why haven't you unified, why haven't you consolidated? And we just wanted to address that. We don't, right now, 100% know if unification is the right answer, but I think what this group does know is that we need to research it, we need to learn, we need to educate ourselves for all of the taxing entities and everyone that lives here. So I think that's the point that we're at, and to Greg's point, maybe it is time to do some sort of, a, a survey or a research, get a consultant in here so that we can get the data and understand it. We may all get the data and look at it and say, what we're doing right now is, is the best for the community, and we're going to continue to have two separate governments. We don't have those answers right now. I don't think anyone can say that for certain. I think we think we understand that it would be better to, to be one efficient government, but I, I just don't want to derail this meeting from the purpose that it was originally intended for.
I agree.
We are not currently talking about unification. It is something that we wanted to address, because as you said, it is the elephant in the room. So if anyone has questions, whether that be anyone in the community, please come to one of us, we will be happy to answer your questions to the best that we know right now. But we have a lot of work to do. And just know that we are doing what's best for our community members, for our police department, for our fire department, and we want what's best for everyone.
Greg.
Well, we'll do one, one last comment from the crowd, because it wasn't a meeting, so we really didn't have public comments, so we're just trying to.
I understand, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the efforts of the board, and things in the discussion that you're having. I also appreciate the efforts on, on building the wall and some of those things, I do think, though, it's, it's a little bit slow. I would say that I have a copy of the 2012 study that was done, and I have read and done a, a little bit of research and stuff on it, and how, how it affects some things under the government, government modernization act. And I have a question that I would like to propose based on, on that information. I believe, Mr. Blackler, you started out on that committee in 2012, and then subsequent person issues and stuff were removed. But my question is, that if a sufficient number of voters under the, under the government modernization act brought you a petition for you to do a formalized study, and then to decide the best option, and then propose it, and give that information to the voters for them to talk, to make a final improvement, how would you, would you vote to approve or move forward in that study as they did in 2012? And principally, I'm concerned or focusing on the township board, because it was the township board that voted in 2012 not received.
Well, we weren't here in 2012, so.
I understand that.
So I can, I won't even address that. I think you depend on your feelings on it, and I think we're in agreement with you, that a study does need to be done. And yes, when, when, get the answers to that, and we all collectively decide what's best, we're going to get that information out there and let the voters decide.
Yeah, I agree completely, and to help move that ahead, we are in the process of collecting signatures to, to help move that forward.
I don't even know that the signatures are necessary, because I think that's already what we're doing.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to comply with the state statute to ensure that we don't have any problems.
But again, I don't think it's necessary, because I think we, we're in agreement that that's what this group is doing.
Okay, I'd like to get back to our work session, if you will, because this is our opportunity to sit and, and talk with each other, and, and to brainstorm and things like that. So if we can just kind of get back to, to what the meeting was noticed as, I think would be best.
If I may back up here, and, and I think where we, where we were was, Greg was recommending, let us get a study, financial study agreed between us, but I, I wanted to make sure in backup, is that the right thing? Is that the first priority that we should do? I think it is. I'm, I'm not challenging that to say, I think there's something else we should do. That's my, I, I think my top priority is making sure that the schools and the library are made whole. I want to make sure we're in agreement before we go spending money on doing a study, that, that's all, that's, that's all I want to make sure.
Do we have an idea of even what this study would cost?
Well, that would be my question, right?
Right.
Before anybody can answer that question.
Right, before I can answer it.
Yes. Is that a $100,000 decision, is that a $10 million decision?
Is that something we can ask Ryan and Don?
We spent $30,000 in 2012.
Is that something we can ask Ryan and Don to get us some quotes on?
Yes. Ryan, if you could, if you're, I know you're online hearing us.
Message her, let her know.
I know, I'm looking at this, I'm looking in the air.
I don't, I also don't think it's a financial decision, and I apologize if any consultants are in the room, but, a lot of consultants make a lot of money, and they don't necessarily provide a lot of information all the time. So, I think it has to be a qualified consultant that has done something like this before, not somebody who says they can do that. So, again, I apologize if I offend anybody, but a lot of money is spent on consultants, and it's put on a shelf, and nobody really does anything with it. So it needs to be someone who's done this, there needs to be really a process from that standpoint.
There's a story behind that, there's, there's a.
There is. I will.
But another, another thing that we all have to remember is, again, this is a work session, and we can't vote.
Right, no, no, yeah, I'm not.
So, I don't think that we can collectively sit here and, and, and say that, yes, we're all willing to move forward with a financial study, we would have to do that in our respective board meetings.
Correct.
And it would have to be on the agenda and then discussed individually. But I do think that, to Shane's suggestion, that Brian and Don could at least get some quotes on what that would look like, and then maybe compare notes, and, and then bring that back to each of the respective boards, so that we can review who the consultants are that were, you know, involved in giving the quotes, and what, what their qualifications are, and then whether or not we have it in our respective budgets to, to move forward with that financially.
I think it's fair to say that everyone here, and correct me if I'm wrong, everyone here at the table wants to proceed on that basis. I mean, we're not taking a vote, but it's good to say, if there's disagreement, it's good to kind of get out what are the issues there.
Um, thank you. So, feel like I've lost total control of this work session. So, is there any other topic that anybody wants to discuss? Is there anything else that we've seen out there on social media that we need to address for the public? Is there anything else that's on anyone's mind that's here tonight that we want to talk about before we?
I just got a question. Dan, I'm glad to see we got the firefighters here, or some of them, is there anything that we should be bringing up here about the firefighters? Anything from the audience there that, of firefighters that are present? Maybe not? I'm not trying to stir the pot, I'm just trying to ask.
No, I just think we like, I thought we'd had the discussion before, and it seems like the focus changes at each meeting, because I've had people approach me, and I thought we were talking, previous meetings, that we weren't specifically going to talk about consolidation, we were looking at things that we could do in committees, that you, my concern is now, and I didn't come back to you, but you also wanted to consider that, and last night, they took a vote to decide to go with that direction, so, I just, it seems like we keep going back and forth, and maybe that's just me, but I think, I think we either need to decide, that's what we're focusing on, and we're moving forward. I understand it's not a process that's going to happen tomorrow, and I understand the desire, and I'm not trying to speak for the board, but I've had a little bit of confusion. I was involved back in 2012, and the study was done in 2012, so, just a few others here, this isn't my first go around with this.
Well, and I guess I, I view it as there's two, I don't know if you want to call them parallel paths, or what, there's two paths that I think need to be discussed. One, because, quite frankly, the consolidation chatter, and I appreciate it's on social media, it's great that it brings things up, and it brings things forward. I think that's one path, that can simply be, we need to figure out what this is, what is this true number? Is the deficit or this number changed because an assessed value or an amount got changed, so therefore suddenly things change, and can that swing in another direction? Are we building more buildings, whatever? But then the other piece is, the very simple stuff is, why can't we talk about shared maintenance? Why can't we talk about how we bring other things forward and not lose track of that? Because that stuff's easy, we can move forward now that we don't have to bring in consultants, whether overpaid consultants or underpaid consultants, or now you know what they're doing, or anybody, we do the right thing in that way, and then we talk about this, this is truly what the number is over here, and then move down that path. But this, we spent, I don't know, 30 minutes talking about numbers that we don't have any idea if they're correct or what they mean, it's perceptions of folks, there's a bunch of backstories that everybody wants to play this and play that too, and I think that's wasteful of the, the, the town and the township, and everybody who votes, and everybody who's trying to do the right thing. So, let's do the easy stuff, like, let's save some money on this, let's look at these, these four areas we talked about, and not get, not get lost in something we got lost in 2012, and then move forward and figure out what the right thing to do. So, I think, if somebody's worried about that, chief, I, I think that's a separate path, we're doing the due diligence, this is, for us, it's a new board, so let's do that, let's let us learn, to Ann's point, let's learn about what are the gymnastics that go with this. It's not as simple as some make it seem, it's not as challenging as others make it seem. So let's figure out what that truly is, so that we're all reading from the same book. So, I don't, I just, I don't weigh off topic, I think.
And I do think it's kind of fluid, because, you know, we're, we're elected, and the, we are the voice for the residents, and for the people, our constituents, and the people that elect us. And we, it's not what the eight of us want individually, it's what is the public saying, what is our feedback, and what are we hearing? And that's why we wanted to address the social media post of the most recent few weeks, because we're starting to see more posts addressing consolidation and things like that, and that's the only reason it was even brought up tonight. And that's the only reason it was even brought up tonight, was because, you know, we're live streaming, and so we're answering the questions. It's best that they hear from us directly, as opposed to coming up with their own scenarios or hearing it from their neighbor that really doesn't know what, what we're doing, or what we're thinking, or what even is involved in any of it. So it's just trying to clarify for the public more, more than anything, I think, at least for me right now.
Yeah, and for me, as that representative, I really need to see the numbers from, to say, we're all in agreement that we should consolidate. I am not in agreement with that, because I don't know that I naturally believe the numbers, because the numbers have changed, and I've never seen it from an, an actual source. It's people and numbers and emails.
I know what you mean.
I don't know, great. I mean, I, I want to trust that everybody's saying the right thing, but.
You want to see something concrete.
Yeah, I just, and that's where a, a separate entity, a neutral party, I think that maybe is the way to go. But again, I'm not, I'm not one way or the other, I just, I think we really need to do due diligence and be smart.
I agree. And I think, though, that while that's here, and we're, we're moving, this is a much slower train than the other that we.
Right.
We can move quicker on. So we're constantly moving, we're running parallel, just one train's running a little quicker than the other one. So, um, one thing, too, that we kind of talked about when it was Shane and Robert and I at our, our meeting, and, and opportunities for more efficiencies and things like that. We, we talked about, I met with the, in, gosh, February or March of 2020, I met with the Cascade Superintendent, Dr. DiAgostino, is that how you say it? Okay, I always, I apologize to him if he's listening, so. I met with him, and we talked about how they incorporate solar energy and things like that to their schools, and what kind of cost savings they've had and, and, and things. And the reason I wanted to do that was because if we, you know, we were kind of talking about building a new town center, and some of our parks facilities, and as we develop parks, is solar an alternative energy that we should be looking at as a way to save taxpayer money on utilities? Because utilities is one of our bigger expenses overall. And so I had that meeting with him, Ryan and I went and met with him, and then we were talking about, you know, would it be prudent to at least when we're building new taxing entity structures, new firehouses, new town centers, new parks, you know, like even Murphy Park, if we were going to heat it, could solar be a source to heat it, as opposed to just putting in a, a boiler system or whatever, however you guys heat a pool? I don't know. But then Robert forwarded to me an article from Arkansas School District, and it's, it's recent, and it showed that just the savings from their school corporation, not even town facilities, their school corporation was able to pay their teachers $15,000 apiece more in salary from the savings of using solar. So I think, you know, again, we're fiduciarily responsible to our taxpayers, and are we making the best use of our taxpayers' money if we aren't at least getting bids on solar energy and some other sources of things where we could have substantial cost savings across the board? And I know, you know, they last, they've, the technology has improved, the panels now last 25 to 30 years. There are lots of federal grants, there are rebates from the local utility companies and things like that, that can bring down the initial cost even, which would help us see as savings quicker than just the initial dollar amount without the grants and the rebates. So I, I don't know, is that something that we kind of want to talk about or explore? Would that be a subcommittee that we want to add to our list of subcommittees as we're moving forward? Or is there anyone's opinion on that, or discussion that would like to, you know, happen here?
I'll speak. I'm a huge fan, obviously I was the one that found this article in SOTTO, and, and I want to be clear, that's not fair. It's a bit of apples and oranges there. I think what I shared it was, was just to highlight that there's, there's an awesome opportunity, a big giant, I feel like a big giant source of savings that we can do if we, if, if, if numbers match up, if they're right, that it, it could drastically improve not only town, townships, quite possibly the school and/or the library. Imagine not having an electric bill, and I, I look at our check register every month, we've got a massive electric bill. I, I can't, Scott, oh my God, I can't imagine. I genuinely can't imagine what your schools take, so having that provided, just from sitting on your roof, that's a pretty awesome advantage. So I, I, I think what Don's trying to get at is, is this something maybe we want to, maybe we want to look at some kind of joint? I don't know how we would do it, I don't know.
I don't know, do we want to make it a subcommittee? So that the subcommittee could research and gather more information? Because again, you know, I have only spoken to one school administrator, and, because it was the closest one in our region that's using it for their school systems, and so speaking with him about it. And then Robert provided the source from another district. But when, when I went out to meet, it was about our new town hall, our, our, even our park shelters and things like that. If we had a few solar panels on top, could we extend the rental time, you know, at some of those, or for special events or things like that, if, if there was electricity out there at our park shelters and so on and so forth, or the restroom facilities and things like that within our parks? So I just wanted to throw it out there as a topic, because.
I would suggest.
That's what this meeting's about.
I would suggest that we can put it on the town's work session, and we can talk about it and, and open it up, that you guys can, if you want to talk about it at one of your meetings, and try to get an understanding between the three of you. Is this something you want to do, the five of us? And then maybe come back and say, let's put together a subcommittee.
Yeah, I think it's, I think somebody, you know, organizations that do solar, you know, panels and systems and one like that, they should be able to come in and easily say, what, A, would it be to a new construction cost? What's it cost to retrofit existing construction?
Right.
What is the cost savings? What's the time to pay that off? And then maybe together, is there a, hey, this is how many buildings combined we have, or many, this many, and maybe they, there's something like that. But I think they should be able to come in and do that, and provide all the, they're the ones making the sale, so. Yeah, I think we can talk about that.
I mean, is anybody against it?
No, it's interesting, for sure. Why wouldn't we look into something that could potentially save money?
I think that's what we're talking about, efficiencies, so is there a way?
I feel like that was my argument. I feel like that was where, like. Yeah, it's a, and it's relatively easy, it's not like we're putting a windmill at the top.
Right.
That was on next week's agenda. Oh, sorry, sorry. That's going to hum all.
Kill the birds. Uh, is there anyone else that has any comments? Do we want to go around before we close the meeting out? Is there, do we want to set up a day, or at least are we going to continue with the current schedule, which is, seems to be like every other month that we're getting together and meeting? And then what is the action plan from this meeting? Where, do we all meet again with our respective breakout groups, or?
We were doing once a quarter, is what we had kind of moved to. Correct me if I'm wrong, is that right, guys? On their phones. Like, once a quarter, I think is fine, because then that gives our groups time. I know, for example, our group, there's one particular thing that has to be done, and that's a lot of work, so.
Okay.
I know every group is different, but we may not move the needle very far in three months, we're not sure.
I mean, I think quarterly's fine, I think as long as we're touching base in those, I mean, we, certainly our group has some, some stuff that can land relatively quickly, I would think. Sure.
So just to touch base, just, yeah, each group just kind of give a quick little report like we did, and keep it conversational.
So there's no new action, other than we're still going to follow up on the maintenance facility? And I think Don Ryan said that he got with you, and that you were going to be getting with Dan and having a conversation, and then maybe coming back to Ryan, and then involving Sean, and trying to start figuring that out. And I know we kind of talked about adding in another element, which would be tires and, and things like that, so.
Yeah, Ryan and I talked, and we plan on holding a meeting, we'll involve the two chiefs, and the support services director, and then whoever the town wants involved too, and then see what it would possibly look at, and how would we structure it, and how we started out, et cetera. So we're already have some similar stuff already set up through the collaboration group, where we're charging fees, and we've been waiving fees for each other if it was in-house fees, I mean, so it saved the taxpayers, you know, there from.
We're not writing checks to each other.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So it's under that same concept. But yeah, we talked about, and then after the first year, we were going to get that meeting set up, so. I already have it down to talk to him about getting that meeting set up, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you. Thanks again.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody's time, and again, just everybody's being open for conversations, I guess.
Do, do we want to go ahead and schedule? I think it's probably best that we're all here to get a, to, to get some.
Could Jared do the same thing, where he sends out the?
Yeah.
Did you send out the?
That worked.
Get everybody's feedback.
Sometime quarter two, so.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. We're going to go ahead and call the work session adjourned.